...the Liberation Board meeting, would you please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Davis Kane, present. Mr. Maurice Carey.
Here.
Ms. Catherine Colorado.
Here.
Sadie Gilbert.
Here.
Ms. Sandra Gill.
Here.
Mr. Ezra Lo.
Here.
Mr. Joel Rippon.
Here.
Mrs. Tina Price Jeans.
Here.
And Mrs. Nicole Backing.
Here.
Okay. We do have a couple acknowledgements this evening. First, as you know, back in December, Mrs. Cuffey had resigned from the board for many years. She was a teacher here at the district, touched a lot of lives, and also, as you know, served on the board and was president of the board, so we just have a small token of appreciation to thank her for all her service and everything that she has done for the Alacopa School District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would I do have a little bit to say if you'll bear with me? I wrote it down to make sure, can you all hear me?
No. We'll get into mics when you hear. Thank you.
To make sure that, um, how's that better?
Can you hold that?
Can I just put this over here? Can you hear me now, is this on? I, I, I can talk about. Alright, um, I wrote this down to make sure that I didn't leave anything out because all of this is dear to my heart and very important to say, and I will be, I promise you I'll be less than a minute. Okay, first of all, I am humbled by this recognition and I sincerely appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Over time, I've received different awards, but this one is very, very special. It represents not only my service to the district, to our, to the Alacopa community, but more importantly, it's my faith in action that it represents. And by that I mean, action that has impacted individuals to make positive change. So I'm very proud of that. With that being said, I challenge you, when I say you, I mean the community, the, all of the staff, the administrators, and especially you, the school board, to act, to purposefully act as one and ultimately accomplish the same goals, which is why we're all here, why you're all here. Um, and that goal is to provide opportunities for every student to experience and achieve academic success. And this can certainly be done through having mutual respect for one another and also use good decision-making with integrity, or make decisions with integrity. And with all of that being, being said, once again, I am honored to have this plaque. I will always cherish it, and I'm even more extremely proud to have been able to serve Alacopa School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just mention one thing. The work is not completed. We spoke a few weeks back and exchanged a few emails. She has some friends at her graduate school, herself there putting together some scholarship opportunities for our seniors this year, at least two students who were receiving a scholarship. So, once again, thank you. The next person cannot be with us this evening, this is Mary Ann Bible. As you know, retired from the elementary school cafeteria, but she was kind enough to write a little note.
She sent us a little note. Hello to everyone. I really don't even know what to say, except that I feel very honored being recognized for the many years working for the cafeteria. I've enjoyed every one of them. Sadly, I will miss the teachers, the children, and the wonderful ladies I have worked with. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone. It has truly been my pleasure serving the school district. Mary Ann.
Mr. Danny Bob was here this evening to accept her. Next, we have Sean Slidronowski from the Highmark Care and Place. There is an agenda item that he's going to talk to, talk to us about, and at this time I'm asking more enough, he does have something to pass out to all the workers.
Awesome. No, that's fine right there. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Gus is going to give you a hand. He's gonna hand out some pamphlets about the Highmark Care and Place.
Right.
Uh, there's, there's only about eleven there, so I might be short a couple.
I'm good.
Alright. Um, so again, thank you for having me today. My name is Sean Slidronowski. I work at an organization called the Highmark Care and Place. Um, at the Care and Place, we support children, teens, and their families that have experienced the death of a family member. Um, we have two locations locally, one in downtown Pittsburgh and one in the Warrenville area. Um, I work out of our Warrenville office. Um, we are a community program that's offered at no cost to families, so we actually don't provide counseling or therapy, but we provide a service called Peer Support. So we bring families together that have experienced the death of someone really close to them and give them an opportunity to meet with other families that are experiencing the same thing. Um, through that, um, through our program, our site-based program at the Care and Place, we also have a partnership with schools called the Care and Team for Grieving Children. And the Care and Team is, is a partnership where, you know, we just really want grief to be a little bit easier to talk about in schools. We partner with schools to provide grief resources. Um, we do some different awareness-raising activities surrounding a special day called Children's Grief Awareness Day. Um, Children's Grief Awareness Day falls on the third, Thursday in November. Um, this year will be November fifteenth. But through this partnership with Care and Team, um, schools have said to us, you know, it's wonderful, we like bringing awareness to your program, it's a nice community program, but what we really need is some more support right inside the school walls, more clinical support. So we developed a school services program over the last five years. So my role there is called, is a school services coordinator. Um, I go to schools, I provide consultative services to schools that, um, are dealing with maybe a child returning after a death, or, um, maybe a child is diagnosed with a terminal illness, or a staff member recently died. So we, we do lots of consultative services with schools. We offer tours to the Care and Place, so if school members ever want to come see what the Care and Place is, so they know what they're referring families to. Um, we do educational training, so we can come in like on an active day-to-day and design a training for faculty. So it can be a, you know, hour and a half to a full-day training, whatever fits the needs to a school district. But the biggest thing and the reason why I'm here today is, um, we also provide our peer support groups at schools. Um, just like all of our site-based programs, any of our partnerships in the community with schools is also offered at no cost. Just fortunate to have the support of Highmark to, um, provide the funding for our program. Um, so what the school services peer support program looks like is, schools will typically sign a two-year agreement for the Care and Place to come in and co-facilitate grief groups in the school walls. Um, we found that, you know, so many things happen in a family's life that makes it difficult to get to the Care and Place, extracurriculars, transportation issues, um, maybe the adult that's grieving just isn't ready to talk about it, but maybe the child or the teen in the family is. So having the school groups is a really nice alternative to those families. Um, the school groups is, it's an agreement that, um, to give on your agenda for today's meeting, um, we will come in and provide a training to your school counselors to help implement our model and our philosophies on grief, and then we'll actually co-facilitate a group with your counselors on-site. And during that group experience, it's about anywhere between seven and nine meetings. Um, it lasts about a period in length. Um, and, you know, typically we have anywhere from five, five children to up to ten in the, in the group.
We have, uh, service to Alacopa children already. Is your location?
Yes, Alacopa children have come to, to the Care and Place, both from, um, kids in your district and also some of your families that are teachers here.
And you said this would initially be a two-year agreement?
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna have to rephrase the.
That's okay. Um, it usually, um, the agreement is, it's in the first paragraph, we usually, we usually have a two-year agreement. And the reason we have it for two years is, so, um, we have enough time to work with your, your district. Your district's smaller and all your schools, you just have the three schools, but sometimes our schools we work with have several schools that takes us a few years to, to be able to, to meet all the, all the needs of the schools.
Any, any costs?
No, there is no cost associated, um, with the service.
Is this exclusively for groups, or do you do individual counseling as well?
Um, we, we do do groups. Um, we don't provide the counseling service individually, but a lot of the times, the activities that we're doing in the groups, say maybe the child doesn't want to participate in the group, the counselors can work with the, the students individually and do a lot of the same things individually with the students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Gus. I'd like to say a few words regarding some of the student services this time.
Hello. I am the Director of Student Services, if you don't remember. Some of you hired me. And if you are one of those people, thank you very much. I appreciate it still. It's been great. After being here, I made a little paper for you, and, um, I wanted to just pass it down and let it fall through. That starts you guys over here, so in case it doesn't get too long time. I wanted to quickly go over a part of our special education program. And, um, you know, special education and, um, other student services, like English as a second language, or, um, you know, Section 504 Service Agreement, they are a lot. Um, if I wanted to dive into something and really present, it would take a long time. So what I did was, I summarized something that I think is important to start with, and that is what our continuum of services are for Alacopa. Um, a continuum would just be basically how we handle the students from one end of the spectrum, which would be a student without a lot of need, all the way down to our students with a lot of need, and, um, what we have in place in our school district to, uh, to meet those needs. So what I did was, I took K through three, and I showed the total population of students, which is three hundred and seventy according to Power School when I looked last week. And at that time, we had eighty-two students, kindergarten through third grade, that are in special education. That means that they qualify for special education. That is not a 504 Service Agreement, if anybody knows what that is. This is only students who have IEDPs. Um, beside that, I, I subdivided into the levels of service. Uh, learning support is, um, is what most students who have special education needs, um, what they learn. And, uh, learning support and speech support are mixed together, and you can see that sixty-three of those eighty-two students are in learning support. And then beside that, we have some, some more intensive levels of support, uh, life skills support and autistic support. Uh, the school district underneath, I have under strengths, has a really, really effective autistic support and life skills support program. Um, it's, it's very extensive, and compared to our neighbors, we actually have more classrooms than most of them. Uh, you can see that life skills support, which is students who have intellectual disabilities, um, they, they, um, they have a whole different curriculum, curricular need, uh, they learn alternative curriculum, and they take a different state assessment even. Um, their, their, uh, their goal is just like everyone else, to become a well-rounded, working citizen. Um, their path is a little different. So what Alacopa offers is a classroom, K to three, another classroom, four to six, and a third classroom in this building, which is a, uh, is a very extensive program. So I was, I was really thrilled to see that when I came. Um, all three classrooms have that number of students that I have underneath the life skills box. You can see that. So twenty-two total in-house life skill students. Very nice program. Autistic support beside it houses, um, we, we educate twenty of our own students in-house in autistic support. Autistic support has a different, um, level of need, even though it's similar to life skill support, in that they have a different curriculum, and they also usually take the PASA instead of PSSA. Um, autistic students tend to have, have different needs when it comes to sensory input and social skills. Um, so we have our classes in Alacopa divided. Um, I will tell you that lots of school districts don't do that. So that's something that's special for Alacopa, and it's a real strength. Um, many school districts this size have one life skills, and they'll have both levels of support in that room. And it's not as effective as having them separated like this, so that's a very, very nice strength. Um, some of the things that I have marked down, there are community-based instruction, um, and the Special Olympics are things that we offer in-house, that are also things that are offered in the out-of-district places, like New Horizon. Does everybody know what New Horizon is? Okay. Or, or Watson Institute. You know these places. But, um, we offer lots of things that they do there, here. Now, we can't offer everything, and that's why if you see a long, right-hand column, you have some students that are placed outside of the district. And, um, the students that are placed outside of the district are receiving some services that maybe we don't offer, but we do offer a lot in-house, which is really a strength. Um, I also decided to show you the percentage of special education, and if you look at the second call, you can see that, that's not me, by the way. Shut mine off. I ain't gonna take that in my phone. You know, judging there. Um, we're at twenty-three point six percent for special education, and that's high. Um, if you look at the next page, I gave you the, the most recent released Penn data, which you'll notice isn't terribly recent, because the state is in a rush to give us information, they're really in a rush to get information. But you can see that, uh, by the way, you can just Google Penn data, and you can find all this right on the internet. It's really easy to find. But the state average for special education is sixteen point nine percent, and we're, we're almost at twenty-four. So we're above. But, um, another thing that I, that I know is that the further you go away from the city, uh, the higher the number goes. So compared to our neighbors, we're not that much different. Um, in Pittsburgh Public Schools, you'll find fourteen percent, thirteen percent. And really, this is just my, my guess, I never worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, but the schools are so much larger, I assume they have programs that can meet the needs of their students without going into special ed. And as you, you can actually go to this site, and as you can swim the thing away from Pittsburgh and away from Philadelphia, you'll see the number go up. So yeah, twenty-three is high, and, um, it would be nice to find ways to bring that down a bit. On the other hand, uh, lots of, of areas this far away from the main cities are high, so just to mention that. Um, we have nine point four percent of our students placed out of districts. The average, um, and you can see it on the next page if you're curious, is four point nine percent. So we're almost double having students placed outside of our district. Um, so that's something to be aware of. Um, I, I noted a couple strengths, because, you know, I'm pretty new here, so I'm discovering the strengths as I'm going in and out of classrooms, getting to know people. And one of the things that I think is really, really great is the general education staff at this school is, is very, very helpful for students with special needs. They're extremely flexible compared to our neighbors. Our, our teachers, especially in high school and middle school, because that's where it gets really tough in most school districts, whenever the curriculum becomes very hard for students that have disabilities, they, they really go above and beyond to, uh, to make sure our students can succeed in our classrooms. And I think that is a strength that we, that we are lucky for, and we should keep leaning on. Um, I, I'm amazed sometimes in these IEDP meetings, how much the teacher has already done without being asked. And I, I think that's fantastic. Um, and, oh yeah, our partner with Positive Steps. Does everybody know what Positive Steps is? It's, uh, I think Western PA Psych is the name of the company. They do in-house therapy, and they have, um, they have offices here, and they have offices in the other building. And, and they are a wonderful resource for the students, so that's a real strength for our program as well. They do, they do independent therapy, that's what. And they go through, they go through insurance, so it isn't through school funding. Um, and that is a, that's a great system that we have in place. A couple needs are, I, I believe we need a more inclusive system, um, for K one and two in special education for learning support, a little less pull-out and a little more support in the classrooms. I feel like we need, um, more social, emotional supports for our students, and, um, we've been evaluating all the programs to see if we have alternatives for the out-of-district placements. Now, we have to have strong alternatives, because the number-one thing is providing the student who has the disability with a free, appropriate public education. And so we would never bring back and shrink our out-of-district number without having a program here to help, which for life skills and for autistic support, we have a strong program. So that's basically my quick, early analysis of our program. If you have any questions, feel free to ask now, or, or call me.
Who, um, determines their, um, limit of education, educational knowledge? Do the school determine or label them these different, um...
That's a great question. I'll give you the answer, and I'll try to make it make sense, because it can be very complicated. These are just levels of support. The, to get into special education, there's thirteen categories. The thirteen categories, they span almost anything you can imagine. And in the categories, it's under the Individual Disability Education Act idea. They're all defined. And a school psychologist tests a student, and they give them an IQ test, and they give them an achievement test, and they have a whole gamut of tests, some of them I don't even know the name of, I learned it as I go to. They, um, they determine if the first category, if any of the thirteen categories can get part A, and part A is, has one of the thirteen categories. Part B, for getting into special education, is needs special education services, which is a little gray, but what it basically means is, you can have autism, and you could not need special education to access school. So you wouldn't qualify for special education, but then you would qualify for a 504 Service Agreement, which is another law that only has the first part, and it's a little lighter. So what happens is, the levels that they determine when the school psychologist tests you, and the information that they pull in from the other disciplines like speech and OT, they, they make that into a report. The report comes before a team, the team that includes the parent decides what the appropriate placement for, uh, FAPE, you know, Free Appropriate Public Education. They decide on the appropriate placement together, and then, then this comes into play. Then, where do we go to meet the child's needs? So first, you, you do a lot of measurement and a lot of testing. Um, it takes, it takes a long time to go through the assessment process. So remember in the community, whenever somebody wants tested, let them know that sometimes it takes two months to go through that process. There's also time limits where we can't go beyond. If you're ever curious about that stuff, I'll let you know that as well. Do you have any other questions?
I do.
Did I answer a question?
Somewhat. Um, now, you said, um, sixteen point, whatever you said was the, um, total, the, um, percentage of, yeah, just for the state. Okay, but are we trying to take it lower or do anything different? Because I know that once you go past sixteen, the school do get extra monies for, um, for the ones that they have, like, we at twenty-four, you said. So, um, we're getting extra money. So are we going, are we trying to raise?
To make it last?
Yeah, to raise, no, are we trying to raise the, um, kids' educational, um, needs? Are we trying to help them so they can? Because it, I mean, we seem to be comfortable with it at twenty-four, because, you know, I guess it's much-needed money, but we can't be labeling our kids for that purpose.
Just understand, well, it's not for the money. Keep this in mind, too. I'll let you know exactly how the, the funding works. It's, um, basically, they do a little algorithm every year, but basically, every student in special education is worth nine hundred dollars in IDEA funds. And that nine hundred dollars comes out to, I don't know, what do we get, like, two hundred grand? Is that what?
One hundred ninety-six this year.
What is it?
Our, our IDEA, one hundred ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, so that's, that's the extra money you get, and then usually, honestly, uh, did you do the IDEA, by the way? I was wondering, because I didn't see it. Usually I do that. Um, the, uh, they usually allocate only part of the teacher's salaries for special education only for part of the year. It doesn't cover a whole lot. It really doesn't. But the, um, it doesn't cover the cost of educating students, that's for sure. But keep this in mind, whenever we, we look through the scope of special education, we look one student at a time. You know, general education, and most of the choices that you make are for a mass of students. We have one thousand thirty students in this school district, and many of the choices that you make on the board are affecting all of them. Special education is the opposite. We look at that one child, one at a time. So that number, that almost twenty-four percent, that became, um, what it is, one child at a time. So in a vacuum, when we sat with that child, with that psychologist, and that child qualified, it didn't matter what the number was. Do you know what I mean? It only mattered what that kid needs and what that kid qualifies for, so.
So can they, can they transition out of, um, special ed, or is it something that's labeled and that's what it is?
They can transition out. Every three years, you get a mandatory reevaluation, unless you have an intellectual disability, then it's every two years. But if you have one of the other twelve categories, uh, keep in mind that some of the categories, um, are physical disabilities, and we know that they're not going to go away. But the part B, the need for special education, could go away. So what you do is, you have a reevaluation, and then they find out if you still qualify. So, so that does happen. And we do have students exit, especially from speech and language. So keep in mind that a lot of young ones up here are in speech and language, and many of them will transition into other needs, but, but a large group of them will exit, and they'll no longer need it, so.
So what type of interventions do we have put in place, especially at the younger level, to identify kids that may not currently have a 504 or IED that may need one?
Well, we have the SAP team, and feel free, elementary principals, if you want to add to this, because being new, I only know what I do know so far about our program. We have the SAP team, and, uh, if a teacher feels like a, a child is struggling, if I'm answering you incorrectly, by the way, you can stop me and I can try to read it out.
No, that's exactly what I'm asking.
Okay. They go to the SAP team, and then the SAP team works with the teacher to come up with accommodations in the classroom, to see if the student will, will, uh, improve with a little bit of intervention. And, um, they keep record, and after a period of time, if they're not improving, they make a choice as a team, and the parent is on board from the beginning to the end, by the way, about getting the child assessed for special services. And then, um, at least four times this year, through an assessment, the child actually didn't qualify for special ed, they qualify for a service agreement. So there's different avenues of support. Um, now, if a parent wants their child to be assessed, you skip all of that, because the parent has the right to get the assessment, um, by just submitting a written request. And then the school district, when they get a written request, it's me, when I get a written request, I have only ten days to respond and begin the process. There, you skip all of the, the pre, the pre-referral stuff. But they do have a pre-referral method. Um, you know, we talk a lot about how to break students into groups and how to work on, work on things in the classroom, but...
A parent can do that anytime?
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a procedural safeguard notice that has all those rights, and if you're ever curious, I'd be happy to share it with you, because it's a public document. It tells you how many, how many days we have to do these things, how to submit, um, how to submit questions. Unfortunately, also tells us how to get lawyers. Don't spread that one around, because we don't want that trouble. But it, it's full of...
Do we have that information available on the website for parents?
I don't know that, but we should.
I'm not sure.
That's a great question, actually. I'll make sure that it's there.
Thank you.
When you say, uh, need for more social and emotional supports, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. Um, some of it, we're, we're in the works of trying to figure out which way to go with some of these things, but, um, the thirteen categories, they, they also have emotional disturbance in it, is one of the categories. You know, we talk a lot about how to break students into groups and how to work on, work on things in the classroom, but.
A parent can do that anytime?
Yeah. And there's a procedural safeguard notice that has all those rights. And if you're ever curious, I'd be happy to share it with you because it's a public document. It tells you how many, how many days we have to do these things, how to submit, how to submit questions. Unfortunately, also tells us how to get lawyers, don't spread that one around. We don't want that trouble, you know what I mean? But it's full.
Do we have that information available on the website for parents?
I don't know that, but we should.
I'm not sure.
That's a great question, actually. I'll make sure that it's there.
Thank you. When you say need for more social and emotional supports, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. Some of it, we're, we're in the works of trying to figure out which way to go with some of these things. But the thirteen categories, they, they also have emotional disturbance in it, is one of the categories. And emotional disturbance often can be a chronical behavior, chronic behavior that is impeding the child's learning. So then, what you want to do is you want to teach appropriate behavior. And the old way, I went to Catholic school, so believe me, the way that I remember from downtown Beaver Falls when I went to Catholic school, they didn't teach behavior. You know, they just would grab me by the back and they'd put me back in my seat and that's how I learned it. But that's not the way they're supposed to do it. That's not the way that science says works best. So what you're supposed to do is put positive behavior supports in place. And so what we did already this year is we've had about ten functional behavior assessments done through Hope Learning Center. And that leads to a plan that has goals and like time for the students to meet with the counselor and go over the goals. And then they try to learn replacement behaviors. Because many students lack, it's a lack of social skills. They don't know what to do correctly. And so, that's what it's about, you know, isolating and teaching social skills. We'll go more into that later.
I guess two, two questions, one connected to that. Is there a connection between you and the need for emotional supports and what's going on with the trauma-informed care? Like, I just, I didn't know if there's any connection.
I think the only main connection is that it's, it's the same.
Yeah, cool.
Well, we're not connected per se, but it's the same idea of helping.
And then can you just speak to, like, systemically? Like, why, why do you think, again, you touched on it, but why, why did the numbers get lower in the city? Like, what's happening in the system? If it's one child at a time.
This is just a guess, I have not talked. Well, I do have friends who work in this. But the larger the school, the more programs they have. They can be, they can be differentiated in their classes. They could have high middle, low groups. They can have things in place to remediate that aren't special education. And lots of, the larger the school, the more avenues. And so I don't believe for a second that we have more students with needs than the Pittsburgh Public Schools that are similar to us. It's just that they, they have different programs.
Um, is it, the kids can be classified in two different categories here?
Yeah. You can be classified in any of the thirteen categories in Pennsylvania. In, in Ohio, you only can get one. Because each state has to interpret the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and that's how Pennsylvania interprets it. So there is, you can have level one, level two, level three. And the psychologist comes up with what the determinations are and the IEP team decides which one is on top. That's how it works.
Can you ask, like you said, it's lower in the city. So, like you say, it's something else they're doing. Is it something that we can tap the hand on and do it here?
That's a great question. I honestly, I can't remember the name of the school, but I was considering doing a couple of visits. And I did visits in the past to other schools whenever I worked at the other school district. And sometimes you can learn from your neighbors and what they're doing well. And often, you know, they'll be able to learn from us too. So I hope so. We're always looking to move forward.
Get those numbers down.
Well, the most important thing is helping the students. The numbers are what they are.
Because you, you put evaluating all support programs. Do you have a mechanism that you have already, a system, evaluation system that you think would work for this, that you could?
To meet the needs of some of these students that are in or out of district placements?
Well, you have down here evaluating all support programs, potential alternatives.
Right. In lieu of out-of-district placements. So what I was moving to is that, the number twenty-three for our out-of-district placements. And underneath, I also did note that we do have seven students placed in Class Academy as well. Those students are not included in this total because they don't have IEPs. It's a different avenue of support. But nonetheless, it's a, it's a big support, uh, being placed in another, another school. So we are, we are exploring options, but at this time, I can't speak to exactly what they are because we're meeting as a team and we're talking about options, but we're working on stuff. Anything else? If you guys think of any questions, you can call me.
I will.
What's that?
I will.
The Alcoa Board of Directors welcomes residents to the school district that eventually pertains to the meeting. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. At this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to a personal voting. You'll be asked to state your name and address and may speak up to three minutes. This public participation session is normally limited to about thirty minutes. Prior to adjournment, at the end of the meeting, residents will be offered another opportunity to post questions on items that pertain to the school district. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions or comments inappropriate or will instruct the superintendent, the business administrator, and/or the solicitor to do further research and report back to the board and/or the resident. If he has specific questions, the board will try its best to respond either at the meeting or shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding so that if questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect rights and privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees, or students in a public session. Once again, at this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to a personal voting. Okay. This is our deliberation board meeting for February twenty nineteen. We do have a few items I would like to take action on this evening. You can do those, I will make that motion. Uh, the first one, under administration, recommendation to approve the following is regular school days, February eighteenth, April eighteenth, and April twenty-third, due to school being closed January thirtieth and thirty-first, and February one, twenty nineteen. Good action, please.
What's that?
Mrs. King, call by Ms. Calvella. Questions or a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number two, recommendation to approve the minutes of the January nine, sixteen, twenty nineteen board meetings. Those are attached in the review. Number three, tax parcel purchases, recommendation to approve. Aid of Crump to purchase eighteen, nineteen McMinister Street with a bid amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. And Kiara Williams to purchase one thirty-eight Orchard Street with a bid amount of one thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars, exonerating all prior taxes for both purchases, through and including the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year. Under finance, recommendation to approve the following reports for January twenty nineteen. The treasures report, reported taxes collected, reported delinquent, delinquent property tax collections, general fund and cafeteria fund financial statements. Those will be available for you next week. Number two, general fund dispersals in the amount. Those figures will be available next week for February twenty nineteen. General fund ratifications for January twenty nineteen. Cafeteria fund dispersals and ratifications for January, February twenty nineteen. Once again, we'll have those figures for you next week. Number three, recommendation to approve quote with Telephonics Inc. for ten gigabyte fiber upgrades to all network closets. Quote is not to exceed ten thousand dollars. The district will pay up to fifteen percent, one thousand five hundred dollars. Quote is available April one, twenty nineteen, through and including March thirty-first, twenty twenty. This is part of the E-rate category two, we approved back at home with Westec. These are liaisons with the, with all the bids came in. Number four, is outdoor cabling, recommendation to approve quote with CompuTech Technical Solutions for ten gigabyte fiber connection from the high school main network closet to the fieldhouse. Quote is not to exceed nine thousand dollars. The district will pay up to fifteen percent, one thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Quote is available April first, twenty nineteen, through and including March thirty-first, twenty twenty. And once again, it's part of the E-rate category two.
So what you're saying is you're going to run cable from here down to the fieldhouse, forward by interment?
Yes. I mean, it could be, I'm not sure how we'll do it, if it'll be.
A lot of the. We received bids for these?
Yeah.
Were there other companies that applied?
Yes. Westec, Ryan went through all the steel bits and did the rating system. I believe Pete, he talked to you about the rating scale, how he was rating the companies. Or he had a grid, he had a grid. He did have a grid and how he rated them based on what the prices were. And I think, I saw five. So he did, he did do that. And then it was put out for RFP.
There'll be more coming, these are the first two we can afford.
Were these based on, not to be presented to the board? Well, just approving a company, there were multiple bids.
I didn't believe the bids had to come to the board. I thought that if he is, that a teacher was able to rate the bids based on criteria that they decided on.
We can share it if you want to look at it, certainly. Okay.
What was your question?
So there were multiple companies that bidding for these contracts. But Slice Tech chose a company out of his bids to look for approval.
Okay.
Where I wanted the board to see all bids.
Is that what we paid Westec for? To do that?
Yeah. We can have it available, it's not a problem.
Just email the numbers before next, Wednesday before we vote. And then any questions or concerns, you can know it at that. Just press, right, get it to him, play, next name.
The what? Do you know? Okay. Under education, recommendation to approve two-year agreement with the High Mark Carrier Place to conduct school-based peer support groups in the Alcoa School District for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty, 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 twenty-one school years.
I just missed, are they to do that for those facilities?
Yes, that's District One, correct.
Yes.
Under athletics, recommendation to approve Mr. Brandon LaDon, athletic director to attend the Pennsylvania State Athletic Directors Association Conference at Hershey, March nineteenth and twenty-second, twenty nineteen. The cost of the conference is three hundred eighty dollars plus mileage and tools. Number two, spring sports coaches salaries, recommendation to approve spring sports coaches' salaries for the twenty nineteen season. Baseball head coach Danny Bible, three thousand eight hundred dollars. Baseball assistant coach John Simmons, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Softball head coach Brandon Pransky, one thousand two hundred dollars. Softball assistant coach Charles Branner, two thousand eight hundred dollars. Track and field head coach Sherman McBride, five thousand nine hundred dollars. Track and field assistant coach Sean Patrick, three thousand one hundred dollars. Track and field volunteer coach Brandon Carter.
Okay, I got a call. When we vote, we're going to vote on that group. Right, because I have to abstain.
Just say abstain on the head coach, correct?
Correct. You can abstain on, yes. Or do you want six separate motions? Is that what you're asking?
I just don't want to abstain on the one third vote.
No, you just abstain.
No, you can just abstain on your husband. We're okay with that.
Number three, Varsity News Network, recommendation to approve purchasing the Varsity Package from the Varsity News Network for nine hundred dollars. It's a setup fee and a one-time fee of two hundred dollars for custom artwork for a total of one thousand one hundred dollars. This is how this came late to Sacramento, Mr. Self, but got attached to the contract.
I didn't get a chance.
Okay. This is, these are all.
I'll look at it tomorrow.
These are all one-time costs. This came up at the athletic committee meeting last week. It's an opportunity, if I remember correctly, Mr. Lontz is going to be here. It's an act where all of our sporting events, the scores would be uploaded right away, any type of pictures. Uh, he had sent some of us, a couple of the schools that are already doing it, Rochester, Ambridge, was doing it. And when I looked at it, they're very nice, so. There's an opportunity, see me a email. The gentleman said in the future, we share ad revenue up to thirty percent every year of the ads that they're able to sell on the site. Under personnel, recommendation to approve the retirement of Mrs. Sue Altovich, effective March thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Administrative assistant at the elementary school. Number two, emergency day hits, recommendation to approve. Emergency days for the following, junior, senior high school professional employee for Wednesday, January sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Junior, senior high school professional employee for Tuesday, January twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Under buildings and grounds, recommendation to approve the naming of the fieldhouse at the football stadium to the Dicca Gilbert, Lobb, and Rebus Fieldhouse, beginning in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. This was also discussed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and Coach Warfield was hoping to put together some sort of ceremony prior to one of the home games earlier here. Number two, recommendation to approve the Little Quips tree leaders' use of the elementary school cafeteria, March twenty-fifth through the thirtieth, five to seven P M. From March thirtieth, seven A M. to three P M. twenty nineteen for tryouts.
Should it be cafeteria? Should I say cafeteria?
I'm sorry. Should be gymnasium, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is it the twenty-fifth or the twenty-ninth, and then tryouts on the thirtieth? Yes.
It should be the twenty-ninth. Fitness class, recommendation to approve Terrell Lindsay of Wolf Fitness to host a fitness class in junior, senior high school auxiliary gymnasium, beginning Wednesday, February twenty-seventh through Wednesday, May twenty-second, twenty nineteen. The class will be held Wednesdays, six-thirty to seven-thirty P M. And Saturdays, ten to eleven A M. A percentage of this profit will be donated toward the Varsity Football Program. Insurance information is attached.
And Pete, we're not, we're not charging him the fifty-dollar pension fee?
Well, he's donating back. The, Wednesday, somebody will be here, so. Mr. Carey, as far as I know, there isn't any cleanup. The only thing that might be is overtime for Short's maintenance on staff. Number four, Dreamers, recommendation to approve the Dreamers Group use of the junior, senior high school cafeteria, Saturday, April twentieth, twenty nineteen, ten A M. and three P M. The cost will be fifty dollars. Number five, Mothers on the Move Support Group, recommendation to approve the Mothers on the Move Support Group use of the junior, senior high school cafeteria, Saturday, May eleventh, twenty nineteen, ten A M. and three P M. The cost is fifty dollars. Substitute custodian maintenance, recommendation to approve Mr. Richard Jackson to the substitute custodial maintenance staff, effective February twenty-first, twenty nineteen, at a rate of ten dollars per hour. ten dollars per hour. The first one, under capital projects, we would like to take action. Recommendation to approve the Castro's lawn and landscape and to repair the sewer line at the football stadium in the site of the old high school, at a cost of nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Whenever there's a good day or when the weather's good, we'd like to get started soon as possible.
So they, did they find where the water leak is though? We haven't done that.
I haven't.
Do you have another machine coming to check the water leak when they start rebuilding the sewer line? So they're two different things, but they have, they have a, but I'm saying if they fix the sewer line and then it might be.
It won't be backfilled and fixed.
It won't, no.
The new sewer line.
No. They won't finish until they find it over.
Um, so is this coming from the old school? This sewer line?
With, that was the one that was, we believe it was crushed during the demolition of the high school. It's about to point now where it's back. From the.
It goes from the field house to the old west.
Yeah, it runs along the state, that own business.
So when they do this work, so we have it, we're insured by them that they're here. But they'll come back if there's a problem.
Woman in landscaping? On Castro?
That don't fit.
No.
No. He does, I think he does. He does explanation and other things.
That don't, that didn't fit.
I think he is, or used to be on the center of school board, didn't have that mucky like Castro.
It is lucky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Caldwell, move. Mrs. Kane, sick. Any more questions, questions on the motion? We gotta do the roll call, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gill? Mr. Carey?
Yes.
And then you.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Riffick?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Bible?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Number two, recommendation to approve Guys Mechanical Systems to install a coil with a heat pump unit for junior senior high school cafeteria, at a cost of five thousand four hundred forty dollars. Please. Mr. Collins?
Any actions, would action help with this this evening?
I'm sorry. Would, would action on this item help this evening?
Not tonight, no. Because I'm actually waiting to hear back from Guys Mechanical on, on one other item related to that. So I'd prefer to wait till next week, if that's okay.
Okay. Okay, number three, recommendation to approve payment to diversify storage, two thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars, penalty over five thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, as approved on November fourteenth, twenty eighteen. These refer to their student desk and chairs at the elementary school. Can we approve the purchase?
Oh, okay. I tried to already do that.
Under policy, there's a.
Were you saying everything? I can now, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's easier. Okay, under policy, six twenty-six, the allowability of cost federal programs, there were some changes. On there were some numbers. Mrs. Buffalini reported back. Whenever we would bid micropurchases, it used to have to be thirty-five hundred dollars, now ten thousand dollars. And whenever it's a small purchase, it's nineteen thousand four hundred, now it's two hundred fifty thousand. It's, these were just the recommended policies.
That's from the federal programs.
Yeah. Under information, the approval sheet from the Career Technology Center. Mrs. Caldwell, any comments? Board notes from the BBIU. Still, any comments for?
You know, what we're doing right now is to make sure that we have to, what we had by the, to the eighth, to give permission to post our address. And it's basically in the other business, you know, nothing but the budget and the hiring of, um, some new, um, teachers, assistants, and assistant, and basically.
Wait, did you say?
My mic's off. I can't hear you. Your mic's off.
Oh.
Just, um, just, just, um, we, we had to sign a paper by the eighth. By the eighth. By the eighth. And, um, the permission to post your address. And we also sent the teachers that are adding, um, they're like cutting and limiting classes as assistant, um, teachers. Um, so. I don't know. 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 But then, uh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I know on Representative Matty's webpage on Monday, and there's an article on paper yesterday, we were awarded the STEM grant for over four hundred forty-three thousand dollars. Governor Wolf's initiative, so that's in collaboration with the practice of nice. We will have some new STEM opportunities for both building this next school year. So it's a big, big thing for us. And, and as you know, both teams are in the playoffs for basketball. The girls play at Fox Chapel, six-thirty Friday against Ellis School. And the boys play Attenworth at Swickley Academy Saturday at one o'clock. Mr. Self?
I don't have it.
Ms. Rich?
Um, first, Tuesday, thirty, February twenty-sixth, we were actually, we had the elementary school, there was an idea of, Mrs. Beverly, she was meeting some people from the community. She talked about about four or five in our discussion. I said, why not let's just try to get someone for everything, or something in our building? And that has been successful. So we would have thirty kids, African-American males, who aren't around that uptown, but high school, coming in as guest reader at that point, as a part of our activity. Active, and that would be Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, and we would begin our meeting on. So they'll go back, it's a lot of time.
What time is that? What time again?
They're arriving between eight and eight forty-five, will, will actually start at nine, and go to the bathroom.
The time?
February twenty-sixth will be one of our, yes, huh?
What's the date again?
February twenty-sixth, Tuesday.
I just have a question on this. Did, was there consideration having women from our community come in as well?
We wanted to bring in males because our children ultimately see African-American women in wrong positions because they, most of them come from single-parent homes, they go to their mothers or a lot. We wanted to put the male in a positive light. Because the media often shows them males that don't look like them, in a positive light, or solely those that look like them, so.
Amen.
Good move.
Ms. Shepherd, what, are they just gonna be like reading a couple stories to different houses?
Actually, the way we're gonna do it, each grade level will have a book. So all kindergarten, we read the same book. First grade will have a different book. We also talked about depending on how the little ones can handle it, because you know, they can't sit for very long. Possibly the books are short enough, they can rotate, and everyone will hear a different book possibly. So we'll see how that goes.
Isn't just the program you used to have before?
Well, I mean, you weren't the principal then.
Oh, you're talking about way back when, two years ago, that classroom, my students did.
Yeah, because it wasn't in the whole school.
Each one of my, no, my sixth grade is actually a Dr. kindergarten class, way back when they read every month with them, and bought them a book every month. Get out of the, without a wall, kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those six grades graduated two years ago.
Wow.
Wow.
I do, uh, need executive session for personnel now actually taken. Uh, motion to adjourn.
I'm a.
Mrs. Caldwell, Mrs. Kane, second. Owen, favorite, opposed.